Good evening. I call to order the Lake Havasu City Council Regular Meeting on Tuesday, December 10, 2019 at 6:00 PM. We would have an invocation by Pastor Richard Tathan, but I don't believe he is with us this evening. So we'll go ahead and start on item three with our Pledge of Allegiance led by Monica Hall from the K-12 Foundation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with just and justice for all.
Thank you. And if you'd like to share some information about your organization?
Yeah, my name is Monica Hall. I am the Chair for the K-12 Foundation. Our goal has been for the last 16 years to help schools, teachers, and students in Lake Havasu City. We provide many things. Our major fundraiser that we do is the Taste of Havasu. If you've ever been there, I'd encourage you every October to go because it's good food and lots to drink. So in addition to that, we also have recognition events. We have a teacher appreciation event. We have the, we are the first organization to recognize the top 20 students through the high school. We provide a lot of programs. We provide the STEM program through every school in the district. We also provide peer-to-peer tutoring at the high school for those students. We work with ASU and we have with our STEM program, we also then have the kids do the Science and Math Olympics for that as well. In reference to donations to assist, we help with the teachers that are trying to get nationally certified. We also provide donation to each school that allows the principal of that school to use the funds for whatever they feel is most important for their individual school. Lately, we have been very involved with pass-through organizations to try to help the community at large. Our organization, although it is the K-12 Foundation of Lake Havasu Unified School District, we want to help the entire community, and we can do that through pass-throughs. We, for instance, ASU, we provide as a pass-through for the STEM program, leadership, and criminal justice programs. The parents then can write a check out to the K-12 Foundation, and then we will actually pay their administration fee for that. We don't charge anything for anybody to work as a pass-through. We are the voice of Rachel's Challenge, which is anti-bullying throughout this school district. We also then now are working on an initiative with Unisource to help all of the children in Lake Havasu City that are disabled or have autism. We literally act as a pass-through, so the donations that come to us, then they allocate where they go to. So we're pleased to be here, say that. We hope that we've touched each one of your lives in some way or another. And if you have any questions?
Excellent. Thank you. Do any council members have any questions, Monica? All right, well, thank you for everything that your organization does. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the roll call. Ms. Williams, if you would like to call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Cal Sheehy?
Here.
David Lane?
Here.
Jenny Koch?
Here.
Gordon Groot?
Here.
Michelle Lynn?
Here.
Donna McCoy?
Here.
Jim Dolan?
Hi, Kelly. I'm here. Thank you for asking.
All right, welcome, everybody. We'll now move on to item five, which is our first call to the public. This is the opportunity where citizens have to address the city council on any matter within the jurisdiction of Lake Havasu City. If you'd like to speak a call to the public, you can make your way to the podium, state your name for the record. There is a green indicator, or there is a light indicator box. Green means you have three minutes. Yellow means one minute remaining, and red means your three minutes is up. You don't have to sign up to speak a call to the public, but we do have some folks that did. This also would be a good opportunity if anyone would like to speak on anything that's on the consent agenda, to speak at this time as well. So Artie, if you'd like to state your name and?
Artie Collins, Concerned Citizen. It's nice to see you, Mr. Mayor and City Council members. I haven't been here in a long time, thank God. I just want to ask the council if they can look into the parking issues we're having on Wings Loop in the near future, please, because there's a lot of people that don't realize there's a city ordinance that says no curb, no parking, and they're receiving tickets, and there is no signage at all. Two signs would probably eliminate that whole issue. And we get a lot of people that are kind of mad at the city right now, and this is the holiday season, so we want to make everybody happy and joyful. And two signs, I'll put the damn things up if you want. You make them, I'll put them up. I don't care. Just have someone look into that parking, because they've been doing it for years, and sometimes they get tickets, and sometimes they don't get tickets, and it's kind of confusing. And just to have someone take a look at that and see a couple of signs will eliminate that whole problem. No parking. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, we do have one person that did request to speak, Dr. Doyle Wilson, if you'd like to make your way to the podium.
Mayor and council, it's nice to be up here as a private citizen, too. I do have a quick thing to read to you, a part of excerpts that I wrote to ADWR, that's the Arizona Department of Water Resources, about the Queen Creek proposed water transfer that's on the consent agenda, but I would like to tell you where I came from, too. I wrote this on November 21st. This is the day after the News Herald put out the article in the paper about the transfer initially. And they had comments from the Queen Creek Director of Utilities and some of the perceptions he had about water transfers in general and specifically for this particular case. So one of the things I, he mentioned in this was that the state of Arizona has appropriated a limited amount of water, which he's referring to the 165,000 acre-feet of water on the car, that's reserved for Colorado River communities. But he was saying that this reserve's intent was expected for river use, yes, but also could be taken away at the discretion of ADWR, which is not entirely true. Another perception that he mentioned here was that the farming that was taking place in the Sevola area was of limited economic benefit to the state of Arizona, using the argument that Queen Creek's economic benefit potential would be much greater. The one thing he really didn't understand, I think, to that was that in general, most agricultural products grown in the state, especially along the river in particular, are not relegated to Arizona as much as it is to other places in the United States and even to other places in the world, such as alfalfa to China, things like that. So there's a lot of exporting that's going on, no matter what the situation. But they're trying to use that as an argument to keep economic benefits within the state. I'm not sure if that logic train is right. He also had, wrote that there's misperception that the, somehow inappropriate to move the water rights from the Colorado River to other areas of the state based on the argument that private property rights surpasses this notion. Colorado River water contracts are not private. They are considered part of a federal-to-local consolidation. In other words, it's not a private property. This could be taken away at any time based on any things that will happen within contracts, such as the one that Lake Havasu City has, if under certain circumstances, we might lose that contract as well. So it's not like a private property, like you would sell a car or something else, or a house. This is completely different than that. And they also want to utilize this water to validate their, or kind of subsidize their reservoir, the groundwater. And this indicates to me that this is not an emergency situation. They have plenty of groundwater. What they're trying to do is limit their groundwater use to meet their safe yield deadline in 2025. So in other words, this is not something that really needs to be done at this time anyway. So just some of the comments that were made that weren't very valid, I just wanted to let you know that this is what I sent to ADWR with the purpose of saying we're opposed to this transfer, just as a city I'm sure is going to vote on.
Yes, thank you very much. Would anyone else like to address the city council during the call to the public?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Mike Bonney. I live at 2383 Holly Drive, Lake Havasu City. I, too, would also like to draw attention to item 7.1 on the consent agenda, the adoption to oppose the permanent transfer of the fourth priority Colorado River water. I won't say it as eloquently as Dr. Wilson did, but I had the pleasure of appearing at the public hearing in Parker regarding this issue, along with the mayor and Councilmember Groot and many other officials from Mojave County. One of the things that, in my opinion, is not entirely accurate is there was a statement made that by approving this transfer would mean a $307 million economic value to Queen Creek. Well, that may result in a $307 million economic loss to the rest of the state. And a lot of our residents might feel why this would be an important issue for Lake Havasu City since it's not in our jurisdiction. If this is approved, in my opinion, it would set a very dangerous precedent. It would put all of the rest of our water in jeopardy, since it would set a trend that similar requests could be made in the future. I thought the Chairman of Lake Havasu Area Chamber of Commerce was going to be here this evening to speak, but apparently not. So on behalf of the chamber, we did send a letter to Department of Water Resources opposing this issue, a copy of which I believe was distributed to city council. So I just would encourage council to approve this, to send a message to the rest of the state that we aren't going to allow our water in now or in the future to be transferred to central Arizona. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address city council during the call to the public? Seeing none, we'll close the call to the public. Item number six.
Mr. Mayor? I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. I guess there's a delay here, so I'm not sure if I interrupt me, but I would like to speak about the selection of the Vice Mayor.
Councilmember McCoy, I'm just announcing that item right now, which is item six, selection of Vice Mayor, which is our annual selection of Vice Mayor. I'll turn it over to Councilmember McCoy.
Thank you very much. First and foremost, I just wanted to make sure that we acknowledge the incredible job that David Lane has done this last year as Vice Mayor, working tirelessly to represent the council. He's also spent much of his time with the Executive Board for the P.E.D., the Executive Board for the MPO, Chairman of the Public Safety Employees Retirement System, the Marine Association, the World Transportation Council, Kiwanis, and he's captain of his neighborhood watch. And I just think that he has done an outstanding job. And at this point, I would like to make a motion to nominate David Lane for our Vice Mayor for the year 2020.
All right, we have a motion from Councilmember McCoy to name Vice Mayor Lane as Vice Mayor for the next year. Is there a second?
A second.
We have a motion from Councilmember McCoy and a second from Councilmember Dolan. Vice Mayor Lane, are you willing to serve another year?
First off, I did not pay her for that.
It sure did sound like it.
Yeah. Thank you, Donna, for those kind words. And it's been a real privilege over the last year to represent the city as the Vice Mayor in Lake Havasu, especially because we have the new mayor that we've had over this last year, and he's done a great job, and so I've got to work alongside him almost every day. And yes, I've enjoyed doing it, and I would enjoy continuing to do it, but it's up to the council on who they would like to have do it. Being the, and I want to say this, I do have the time to do this stuff. People tell me all the time, I see you here, I see you there. One of the things that I'd like the public to know is one of the reasons that you're able to see me there to represent you and to represent the council is everybody up here has a job. They all work, with the exception of me. I'm lucky enough to be retired, and so I have the time to commit to it, and so when they can't be there, I fill in for them, so. And I appreciate.
That's what makes me so grateful.
And I really appreciate the council's support over this last year, so thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion?
There is, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Councilmember Groot?
If I may, I've spoken to this before, I'll speak to it again, but before I do, of course, like everybody else, I'll express my extreme appreciation to Councilmember Lane for his great service, and because he is retired and he has time available, he's done a fantastic job in doing that. However, that said, it presents something of a quandary, in my opinion, because we, in our city, elect our mayor, and I think our citizens expect that. When the council as a whole decides that what we're going to do is vote on a Vice Mayor without having the opportunity for the people who were duly elected by the citizens to have that role, I think then we have to ask the question, should we be actually electing a Vice Mayor, or should that be a rotational position? And if it's not going to be a rotational position, should we just not elect a mayor and have the council elect a mayor as well? Sort of six of one and half a dozen of the other. Well, I don't think the people would be interested in that. I think they like electing a mayor, and that's why you're a great mayor, and we are glad that you were elected. In this case, each one of these members up here is elected to a four-year term, four years divided by six comes to, you can do the math on that, you have eight months, if you were to do eight months in the term, each and every member duly elected by the citizens of this town would be able to have the opportunity to serve in that capacity. So we don't do it that way, but I recommend that we should consider doing it that way. And if that were the case, then obviously, at this point in time, the senior member would be Councilmember Lynn. However, the other point is, you would actually have to then be able to want to do it. So not everybody has the time to do it, as has been pointed out. Some people retired, some people, I would be one of the ones who wouldn't accept it because I have a job that would prevent me from putting time into it. But personally, I strenuously object to this method of selecting the Vice Mayor. I think each and every member duly elected by the citizens of Lake Havasu City should have a chance, and it should rotate on eight months. And if they don't have, you know, the time to do it, or don't want to do it, they have the opportunity to say no. And so I lodge my objection in that regard.
Thank you, Councilmember Groot. Is there any further discussion from any other council members? All right, seeing none, we do have a motion from Councilmember McCoy, naming Vice Mayor Lane for a second year for Vice Mayor. That was seconded by Councilmember Dolan. We are ready to vote.
Councilmember McCoy, we're ready for your vote.
Aye.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
All right, we'll move on to item seven, which is our consent agenda. Would any of the council members like to remove any of the items for separate discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I was going to ask that item 19-2239 be pulled from the consent agenda, but I don't think we need to now that we've heard from two parties. Unless there's anybody else who would like to speak to this, I would leave that on the consent agenda.
Councilmember Groot, you'd have to either pull it off so we can have that discussion, or?
Then I'll leave it on the consent agenda and move that we accept it as presented.
Okay, we have a motion to present, or to accept the consent agenda as presented. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Groot and a second from Councilmember Dolan. Is there any further discussion? We're ready to vote.
Councilmember McCoy, we're ready for your vote.
Aye.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Moving on to item eight, Correspondence, Communications, Petitions, Announcements, and the City Manager Report. Item 8.1 is announce vacancies on Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. Ms. Williams?
Mayor and City Council, there are a couple of vacancies on Lake Havasu City Board, Committees, and Commissions. The following is a listing of those vacancies. Airport Advisory Board, one regular pilot member, and Board of Adjustment, three regular members, three alternate members. Anyone interested can pick up a packet at City Hall, and they are also available on the city's website.
Thank you. Item 8.2 is the City Manager's Report. Mr. Knutson?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'd like to start this evening's manager's report with talking about the other nights and your role, Mayor Sheehy. You attended the Lake Havasu High School National Honor Society induction ceremony as the keynote speaker. In the photo you see in the middle there, from left to right, we have Savannah Valenzuela, Jenna Diller, Hannah Belasbus, Isabel Klitschka, and Bailey Clatt. If I didn't butcher those names, I apologize if I did. The Lake, and also the Lake Havasu High School Student Council hosted Pastries with the Mayor last Thursday, where the mayor and myself provided city updates and talked about the role of the city, and it was a great opportunity to engage the youth and local government. So we got some good questions and some good engagement. Mayor Sheehy, you also hosted the Community Resource Coalition meeting earlier this month. We heard updates and then broke into groups to reflect on accomplishments for the participants and to announce things that we learned over the last few meetings since the coalition started back in April. The community-wide accomplishments include the start of a mental health first aid training, an opening of a day center by the Closed Closet, workforce housing opportunities created by New Horizon. We had learned about some grant opportunities for the different civic organizations that attend the meetings, and we had also an increased understanding of the civic organizations in Lake Havasu City and the services they provide to our community. And lastly, another accomplishment that was noted was the ability for the coalition to collaborate with one another and assist each other's efforts throughout the community to provide civic services to the, to the, to Lake Havasu City. I note here is that ASU Changemakers is working on creating a community resource guide and is asking organizations to provide their information. So if you provide community services from a nonprofit perspective, please contact them at 928-854-9752. They'd like to add you to their list. A lot's been going on just in the, since the last council meeting. We had some groundbreaking ceremonies and concerts and various, various activities that are, that are being, that have been completed and are ongoing as we speak right now. We had the groundbreaking for the new Keller Williams offices at Park Avenue, and we had the groundbreaking for the new Havasu Lanning Resort and Casino across the river just last week. Vice Mayor Lane and Councilmembers Michelle Lynn and Gordon Groot congratulated Steve Bonkner with a proclamation proclaiming December 1st as Stephen Bonker Day in Lake Havasu City for completing his Eagle Project, which is building bat houses and falcon houses for the Lake Havasu Wildlife Refuge. Mayor Sheehy, you lit up the Christmas tree at Wheeler Park, and with the assistance of Avery Scholl, who is also attending the event. Mayor, you also joined the group Havasu Grieving Moms to proclaim December 8th as National Children's Memorial Day in Lake Havasu City, bringing awareness to families who have lost loved ones. The Havasu Grieving Moms is a support group in Lake Havasu City that provides empathy and understanding for families coping with loss of loved ones. Councilmember Donna McCoy handed out insulated tumblers as tokens of appreciation to DAV drivers from Chapter 27, Lake Havasu Kingman Chapter. These drivers each drove in excess of 4,000 hours this year, taking veterans to and from appointments at the VA hospitals in Phoenix and Prescott. And Councilmember Donna McCoy, you and your husband, Kim, along with Bud and Diane Watts, delivered gift packages from the Elks Lodge 2399, veterans at the VA hospital in Prescott. And I believe that's where you're at right now.
Yes, it is.
Last Saturday, we had the very exciting part of the year when the Lake Havasu City Police Department, with the leadership of Chief Doyle and the many volunteers from the Citizen Police Academy Alumni Association, conducted the annual Shop with a Cop event. Each elementary school in the city nominates one girl and one boy student to participate in the event who could use assistance during the holidays. With their parents' approval, the children come to the police department, they came to the police department on Saturday morning, where they were paired up with an officer and a volunteer. The breakfast was kicked off with some donuts, milk, and juice, and then we also had Santa made a special appearance, posing for photos and passing out presents. Councilmember Groot, you were also at the event, but for some reason, were never in the same room as Santa. The officers gave the children a tour of their patrol car before heading down to Kmart to do their shopping. The officers and a child together shot for Christmas gifts for them and their families, and afterwards headed back to the police department, where the children were able to wrap the gifts and tended for their family, their families. They finished the day with a pizza lunch that was provided for the kids before the parents picked them up at noon. You see some really fun photographs here. We'd like to thank all those that made it possible. This is an event that's funded fully by donations from local businesses and community members. Food and drinks were donated by Starbucks, Papa John's, Small Cakes, Cupcakery, Bashes, Smith, Safeway, and Albertsons. And lastly, a few events are coming up in the just next few days. This Friday is the 17th Annual Community Dinner. It's going to be at the Aquatic Center. We'll have two seedings, one's at 4:00 PM and one's at 6:00 PM, so we encourage the public to come out and enjoy a community meal free of charge. And also on this Saturday is the Household Hazardous Waste Day event, and that's going to be from 8:00 AM to noon, and that'll be at the Public Works Maintenance Facility, and the address is at 900 Leonard Bridge Road. So bring your paints, your electronics, and other similar items to properly dispose of these that do not belong in the landfill. And Mayor and Council, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Knutson. All right, we'll move on to item nine, Public Hearings. We'll start with 9.1, which is a Series 6 bar liquor license for Copper Still Distillery at 1600 Akoma Boulevard West, number 65. Ms. Williams?
Mayor and City Council, Andrew Anderson has applied for a Series 6 bar liquor license for 1600 Akoma Boulevard West, number 65, Copper Still Distillery. All posting requirements have been met, all fees have been paid, and no objections were received. The location is properly zoned for a Series 6 liquor license, and the applicant is here to answer any questions.
Great, thank you. Do any members of the council have any questions? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor?
Vice Mayor Lane?
Motion?
Yes.
I move to recommend that the Arizona Department of Liquor Licenses and Control approve a Series 6 bar liquor license for Copper Still Distillery, 1600 Akoma Boulevard West, number 65.
Second.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Lane and a second from Councilmember Koch. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
All right, moving on to item 9.2, is a Series 12 liquor license for Streetside Coffee Company, 2127 Swanson Avenue. Ms. Williams?
Mayor and City Council, Stephen Allen Thomas has applied for a Series 12 restaurant liquor license for Streetside Coffee Company located at 2127 Swanson Avenue. All posting requirements have been met, all fees have been paid, and no objections were received. The location is properly zoned for a restaurant liquor license. The applicant is here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Do any members of the city council have any questions? Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Koch?
Motion?
Yes.
I move to recommend that the Arizona Department of Liquor Licenses and Control approve a Series number 12 restaurant liquor license for Streetside Coffee Company at 2127 Swanson Avenue.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Koch and a second from Councilmember Dolan. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Aye.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item 9.3 is a Series 12 restaurant liquor license for Humberto's Taco Shop at 45 Lake Havasu Avenue North. Ms. Williams?
Mayor and City Council, Jared Michael Rapinski has applied for a Series 12 restaurant liquor license for Humberto's Taco Shop located at 45 Lake Havasu Avenue North. All posting requirements have been met, all fees have been paid, and no objections were received. The location is properly zoned for a restaurant liquor license. I believe the applicant is in attendance to answer any questions.
Excellent. Do any members of the council have any questions? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Mayor?
Councilmember Dolan?
Motion?
Yes.
I move to recommend that the Arizona Department of Liquor Licenses and Control approve a Series 12 restaurant liquor license for Humberto's Taco Shop, 45 Lake Havasu Avenue North.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Dolan and a second from Vice Mayor Lane. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Aye.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item 9.4 is Adopt Resolution Number 19-3361, Appointing a Regular Pilot Member to the Lake Havasu City Airport Advisory Board. Ms. Williams?
Mayor and City Council, the city received one application requesting consideration for a regular pilot member to the Airport Advisory Board. The appointment is necessary to fill the expired term of a pilot member with a term to end on June 30th, 2020. The application for Vincent Talamayo was provided to you in the packet, and he is also here today to make a brief presentation to the council and answer any questions.
Great, thank you. Vincent, would you like to make your way to the podium? If you could just share a little bit about why you would like to join the Airport Advisory Board with the council?
Okay, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, I'm Vince Talamayo. I'm a pilot, been for 50 years, naval aviator, Air Force, and civilian. And I'm retired. Like Vice Mayor Lane, I have nothing better to do. So I decided to try to help the community out and volunteer on the advisory board for the airport. I have 50 years of civilian and military experience, and hopefully I can help out or give my two cents worth anyway.
Excellent.
So any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Do any members of the council have any questions for Vince? No? Well, thank you for volunteering, we appreciate it.
My pleasure, sir.
This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the City Council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Groth?
Like to make a motion. Mr. Talamayo's resume is probably the best resume I've ever read in my entire life, I'm sorry to say, but I don't mean to embarrass you, but he's bringing some very impressive credentials. So I would like to move to adopt Resolution Number 19-3361, Appointing Mr. Vincent Talamayo as a regular pilot member to the Airport Advisory Board, with the term ending on June 30th, 2020.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Groth and a second from Councilmember Koch. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Aye.
Motion carries, seven to zero.
Thank you. Congratulations and thank you for joining. Item 9.5 is to Approve a Professional Services Agreement for Backup Water Source Exploratory Well Drilling with Jacobs Engineering Group, Inc. Mr. Frostley?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. As you just indicated, Mr. Mayor, this is a professional service agreement with Jacobs Engineering to analyze data collected through exploratory well drilling. This information will help the city make decisions as we move forward to try to meet our short and long-term goals regarding our water source and our drinking water supply. Working with Jacobs, the city has recently completed the update to our 2007 Master Plan. The project that we're discussing tonight is included in this master plan with a recommendation to implement with high priority. I have Mark Elliott in the audience. He is with Jacobs Engineering. He led our master planning effort and has worked very closely with me over the last few months, developing and negotiating the terms of the agreement that we have before you this evening. He's going to give a brief overview of what we've accomplished with our water master plan, and then he's going to move into the details of the agreement that we're going to ask you to approve later on. You're aware that Mr. Wilson is in the audience. Mr. Wilson has decades of experience with this type of work, specific to the locations we're going to discuss in the presentation. Between Mr. Wilson, myself, and Mr. Elliott, I'm confident we can answer any questions you may have at the end of the presentation. So with that, I would like you to meet Mr. Mark Elliott.
Thanks, Greg. Honorable Mayor and Council, it's a pleasure to present today the city's water master plan update, as well as the project in front of you for supply reliability. This is my 12th year of consulting for the city of Havasu. I've enjoyed working with the entire engineering and operations staff. It's a great, great group to work with. So today I'm going to talk about, first, the water master plan. The purpose of the water master plan, we're actually, as you heard from Greg, updating a document from 2007. So it's been over 10 years since the last master plan done, and we see a lot of changes in trends in water use. But the master plan serves as a roadmap for water infrastructure for the city for the next 10 and 20 years. We look at water demands, we look at your water supply sources, we focus on capacity throughout your entire system, as well as reliability. And as you know, any system aging has condition assessment work as well associated with it. It culminates with a focused 10-year CIP plan. Water demands, one of the key updates we do is we look at an important linkage with your general plan. There's always a nexus for land use with water estimates. In addition, this exhibit to the right shows your water service areas presented in the general plan, which is the boundaries of our water service planning. As many are aware, we've seen some interesting trends in water use. I hate to go back to some of my plans 20 years ago and see where those forecasts are. But what this exhibit shows is water use within the city between 2008 and 2016, shown on a monthly basis for each year. And what it really highlights is the trend we have seen in lowered water use, lower water use per person, lower water use per house. And this factors into our estimate of future use, looking at these trends. Water use within the city, this is a breakdown by all your land use categories, including residential and non-residential. Not surprising, about 70% of the water use for the city is residential, multifamily and single-family, very typical of a city of your size. This is a graph of our water demand forecast. On the left side is million gallons a day. On the x-axis is the years. Most planning documents, we look at a 20-year horizon period, 2040. We also look at build-out as well. The good news here for 2040 is your water use projection is just significantly lower than what was forecasted in '07. And your build-out of 96,000 people, the capacity estimated here is well below your Colorado River allocation. This is actually a schematic in profile of your water distribution system. The message here is we look at capacity throughout. You have a very unique system in that you convey water from a water treatment plant at the lake, all the way up to the top of the hill some thousand feet. Your operators, distribution operators, do a fantastic job moving water with pumps and tanks and transmission mains throughout the system. The findings of this master plan, several highlights. In terms of capacity, when you have a dramatic drop in water use and water use trends, the good news is your infrastructure actually has available capacity. The message to leave you is your expansion will be mostly driven by growth, keeping pace with growth. From a reliability perspective, supply is very important, and we're going to talk about that today in the project before you. The city does some really positive operations. For example, they have dual tanks, two tanks at each of their sites, gives you reliability should one of those be down. And we have some recommendations to further interconnect portions of your system to increase reliability. Condition assessment, the city's been very proactive the last four or five years. This is just a picture to the right of an old steel tank that needs considerable maintenance. The city has addressed these issues, and you see in the capital program as much as $2 to $3 million being expended to upgrade the tank system in the city, and that's going to continue. In summary, the master plan focuses on a CIP that the priorities, number one, is water supply reliability, two, continue your condition assessment work on tanks and pump stations, and we're recommending an increase in pipeline replacement as the system ages as well. Now I'd like to shift to the project at hand, water supply, the backup water supply project. This exhibit illustrates the water supply system for the city. The south part of the island is the primary source of water, which is a horizontal collector well. And the water's conveyed to your water treatment plant located at the lake. The city operates several other wells on the island and has backup supply on the north as well. In terms of water supply reliability, the system on the north, there are some challenges. It's an old well field, in fact, it was at the time original supply for the city. The wells are reaching, starting to reach their useful life when operated. They do have some issues with turbidity at the water treatment plant. Some are beyond repair, but the city has maintained them in emergency standby mode. The collector well was brought online in 2004 with the water treatment plant. The horizontal collector well located at the island, this is a picture of the well. As part of the master plan, one of the observations is the city started experiencing some silting issues at this important supply. Keep in mind, this is the majority of water supply for your city. We conducted some inspections, and the recommendations from that is the collector well needs some major maintenance. It's 15-plus years old, that's about the cycle where we want to have major maintenance performed. The challenge is we have to take that facility out of service to do the maintenance, and that requires reliable water supply to back up the collector well.
I brought a couple of videos with me to demonstrate what's happening currently with the silting issues. I'll start with this video. This is actually at the cascading aerator at the water treatment plant. It's the first treatment component, it's where the water enters the treatment plant. And what you're witnessing here, this is basically handles our daily, our average daily demand. You can see the water's very clear. My next video is actually of that exact same location during those times where we have to kick in the second pump to meet peak demands during the day, typically in the morning. What happens there is, that actually looks clear. There we go. That's the same water demonstrating the amount of sand. You can see how discolored that water is, you can't see the bottom of that trough no longer or any longer. It's full of sand that's being pulled in from the collector well when we have to use two pumps to meet peak demand. The last movie, this is of the filter bed at the treatment plant. This is during a backwash, the crews are trying to clean the filter beds. Typically, where you see all that yellow sandish color, that would be just black. This is the sand that's being pulled from the water as it goes through the treatment process. So the treatment plant is doing its job very, very well. The issues that we're dealing with is the additional time, the additional staff. Typically, we have to go through two backwashes just to get the filters cleaned before we can put them back into service, which means we have to make sure all the tanks are full when we do that. It takes hand washing, and it takes additional staff to get in and manually push some of that sand to the trough so it can be collected and vacuumed out and removed. So it's an issue, it's starting to be an issue when the second pump kicks in to meet peak demand during the day. So we've identified an issue. What we're talking about is step one to react to that issue.
So the recommended solution is reinvesting in the north well-filled area. The picture to the right is example of a typical well that sits in the north well-filled area, just north of the water treatment plant. The project's going to explore additional capacity in this area, as well as look at the transmission main that conveys that water to the water treatment plant as well. That pipeline runs along easements under power lines that we're going to look at its condition, and the project may include a new pipeline as well. So in summary, what's before you today is a program that looks at some exploratory drilling. We'll be working closely with city staff, there's some great resources here in history at the city. We're recommending a number of borings to look at developing new water supply in the north well-filled area, as well as a site that's been identified on State Park. An important element of this is water quality evaluation and testing from the exploratory work. Our strategy is to maximize capacity as efficiently as we can, cost-effectively, develop a new well design, and eventually move this project into construction. And it may include a new conveyance to the water treatment plant. And the ultimate goal is to be able to provide reliable supply from the north, and then be able to take the collector well down for a need of major maintenance. So with that, love to answer any questions, thank you.
All right. Councilmember Lynn, do you want to start with questions?
Yes, I have a question. While you're exploring for the new well location, hopefully that there is one that we'll be able to use, what would be the timeline from when you find where that location would be to when a new well could be?
Sure. One of the things we didn't touch upon is this is actually a multi-phase or multi-year project. We've got funding for this project to ultimately result in production wells pumping water to the plant over three years. We'll probably see throughout the CIP project to condense that back to two years. So this fiscal year, we're going to gather all this data, we're going to determine where the best locations are to drill, probably only two production wells. The next phase, in the professional services agreement, you see a heading that says additional services. That means we won't have to come back with another agreement for these Jacobs, but we will do an amendment to this agreement to move to the design phase and ultimately the construction phase. So I got the schedule, I don't, I'm not sure how many weeks it says specifically for Phase 1, but I'm hoping within a year to be able to move towards constructing these wells.
I have a question. How long does that construction usually take?
Eight, six to eight months?
Yeah, about eight to nine months.
So it could be looking at two years before we actually have the second
Correct, that's the plan.
Okay, thank you.
Do any other members of the council have any questions?
I have a question, if I may, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Groth?
The existing, I'll refer to it as Rainy, the collector well. So I've got four, six, or eight laterals?
Fourteen.
Yeah. Fourteen?
Brianna, yeah, we've got fourteen.
Are they stacked vertically?
Radially, yeah.
On the same exact
Dr. Wilson or Brianna, if you can make your way to the podium.
We have the answers to these questions.
Elevation, I figured you did.
The horizontal collector well, which has ran like a champ for the 15 or 16 years, is 16 diameter, 16 feet wide and 110 feet deep. And it's got the 14 laterals, two have been turned off because of the amount of sand they're bringing in now with one pump. So Brianna's correct, we're operating with 12. They vary in length and they're at varying elevations in a 360-degree fashion.
Well, they are at varying elevations in a 360-degree. That's what I was asking, I misunderstood my question, I suppose. So the slats for the induction of the water where we're entraining the sand right now, I assume that's, those are all placed on the top of the laterals, right? The steel casing that we shoot up horizontally, laterals, slatted to the top?
Well, the laterals are round.
No, I understand that, the laterals are round. This is like SAGD, like Steam Assisted Gravity Drainage, except we're doing it with water.
Using a bunch of words I don't understand.
Sorry, I'm a driller.
That's why we have hydrogeologists on the team.
Yeah, Doyle, do you have the answer to that question?
If you can make your way just to the podium so those at home can hear us.
Since Doyle was here during the construction of the collector.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Wilson.
The construction of those laterals are 12-inch. They do have a casing, they do have a screen attached to them. I don't know how long the screen is, what length of the screens that there are. I'm assuming it's most of the way, but the laterals vary quite dramatically in their distance away from the collector well.
Sure.
Some as little as 40 feet, up to 220 feet.
Okay.
So in all directions. So that's where we're coming from at this point. What we're trying to evaluate is the gravel packing or the sand packing around the casing and around the screens, to see what the competency of that has, if it's changed.
And that's kind of why I was asking the question, because if I'm not mistaken, I think sometime in the last year, we sent a scubedep down, they took an evaluation of it, they looked at it. Apparently, the report was, it's not too much of a problem, everything seems to be okay. And then not long after that, we start to entrain sand. So I'm just trying to get a sense of, I mean, I'm just making the assumption that, you know, it's all slatted on the top because it's going to be a gravity drainage into the collector arms that are horizontally extended. I mean, I'm just making the assumption that, you know, it's all slatted on the top, because it's going to be a gravity drainage into the collector arms that are horizontally extended out from the main casing, obviously. But you were talking about
I think the slats are all the way around, there's perforations everywhere.
Oh, it's completely perfect?
Yes.
So then we could be entraining the sand from top, bottom, or sides?
Correct.
Okay, that's really what I wanted to know. And do we have an understanding, we have two of them offline? Do we have an understanding of, or a theory of which ones, how many of those might be causing our entrament issue?
Well, we've identified two through our video inspection, we've turned those off, now we're talking tonight about building additional wells that will enable us to take the horizontal collector well offline to do that analysis. We don't know.
Thank you, that was my question.
Do any other members of the council have any questions?
I have a comment, if I may.
Vice Mayor Lane, yes.
Yeah, we're talking about the reasons that we need to develop other wells so we can take this one well offline. So for anybody that wants to learn more about this, I'd like to make a suggestion that the water master plan, a great document that the city staff has put together, definitely read up on that. And on our consent agenda today, we had the Lake Havasu City Water Conservation Plan that was put together by our staff. And if you want to learn about the history, how our wells work, why we have the north wellfields, how we've used them in the past, and how we need to use those in the future, and how to conserve water, and how to save money on your water bill, those are great things to do, and then also next year, when you get the chance, the Day Without Water Tour by Ms. Morgan, if you get the opportunity, you can learn everything we're talking about tonight with those two documents and taking that tour. So thank you.
Excellent. Any other questions or comments from council? All right, this is a public hearing, would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Lane, yes.
I move to approve the professional services agreement for backup water source exploratory well drilling with Jacobs Engineering Group Incorporated.
Second.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Lane and a second from Councilmember Lynn. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Aye. Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item 9.6 is award agreement for professional services construction inspection for the 2019 water main replacement project to Advanced Engineering and Environmental Services, Inc. Mr. Frosley, are you taking that one?
I am, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
This is, once again, another professional services agreement. If the council recalls back on October 22nd, they awarded a construction project for our 2019 water main replacement program. This is the partner to that project where we're hiring AE2S to perform full-time inspection for us. If you remember, you know, the, every year we do a water main replacement program. The sections of pipe that are selected are based on age, the material, the diameter, history of breaks, those kind of things. We put together this program for 2019, the red stars indicate the various streets that will be worked on. This particular agreement that we're asking you to approve this evening is, was negotiated to $111,608, and that will be, can you guys see this?
Weekend.
Okay. That provides us for full-time inspection for the duration of the project, which is five months. Pretty straightforward, happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, are there any questions from any members of the council? Yeah, Councilmember Lynn?
Greg, if I understand this correctly, so this is two phases, so this is only for the first phase that we're voting on tonight, right?
This one right here?
Yes.
This is, no, this is a standalone contract to provide inspection services for the project that the council awarded to Tri-Suns on October 22nd.
Okay.
So in five months, this one will be over.
Okay.
And we're under design right now for the, or we will be shortly for the 2020 water main replacement program.
Okay, thank you, sorry, misunderstood, thank you.
Yes.
Do any other members of the council have any questions? All right, this is a public hearing, would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Koch? Yes.
I move to award the agreement for professional services construction inspection for the 2019 water main replacement project, project number WT7460 to AE2S.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Koch and a second from Vice Mayor Lane, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Aye. Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving to item 10, current events, do any councilmembers have any council committee reports? No? All right, item 11 is our final call to the public, would anyone like to address the city council on any matter within the jurisdiction of Lake Havasu City? Bonnie? Just state your name for the record.
Hi, I'm Bonnie Toy.
Could you just bring the microphone down, thank you.
Hi, I'm Bonnie Toy, and thank you for allowing me to speak, mayor and council. I am not certain to whom I'm supposed to address, address this issue that I have in mind of addressing, so I'm just going to address it to you now. The, just for one moment, quickly, history. When I was 12 years old, I had the most amazing life, lived in Miami, and every day I would wake up in the summertime and walk, my brother and I would run barefoot 10 blocks in the heat to the local swimming pool, because it was 50 cents. It was nice and quick, and we would spend all day at the swimming pool. Now I'm an adult, and I raised my children in Lake Havasu, and I can never afford to take them to the swimming pool because spending $5 each child, and then five, well, $4.50, $5.50, $20 a day for approximately four hours of swimming, just wasn't quite the same as running barefoot 50 cents a day. Anyway, what I wanted to suggest is the pricing of the aquatic center during the summertime, when the kids are out, that you would consider having one or two days with a lower rate for people to enjoy the aquatic center and work on their health.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the city council during the call to the public? Seeing none, we'll close the call to the public. Future meetings, our meeting that was scheduled for Tuesday, December 24th, 2019 at 6:00 PM has been canceled. Our next meeting will be Tuesday, January 14th, 2020 at 6:00 PM for a regular meeting. Is there any future discussion items?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I would just like to say, since I'm not there, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everyone.
Thank you, Councilmember McCoy. So without any future discussion items, we remind everyone to be kind, wish you a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and I'll entertain a motion to, community dinners on Friday, just, or Mr. Knutson mentioned that in his city manager report, we'd love to see you there. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. All right, we have a motion and a second, we are adjourned.